Welcome to the October 20th zoning board of appeal meeting. Our first order of business is to call the roll. Linda, can you call the roll, please?
Are we live, Laura?
It says on air.
Oh, I didn't see. I don't see that. Okay. Mr. Latif?
Here.
Mr. Trymarki?
Here.
Mr. Dolman?
Here.
Ms. Pacheco?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Hope?
Here.
Chairperson McGinnis?
Here. Thank you. Now, we'd like to approve the minutes from the September meeting. Is there anyone who'd like to make a motion on the minutes?
Make a motion to approve it?
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Linda, can you call the roll?
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Trymarki?
Abstain.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Chairperson McGinnis?
Yes. The minutes are approved. Okay. Linda, can you please call our first case for the evening?
Appeal by Linda Hughes for a variance from section 220-15D and section 220-18B3B and section 220-13 Schedule IB of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 874 Northumberland Drive, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district to maintain an 18-foot diameter above-ground pool partially within the side yard setback. Section 220-15D states corner lots, front yard minimum shall be required of both yards facing the street on a corner lot. Side yard minimum shall be required of the remaining two yards for properties located in the R1 and R2 zoning districts. Section 220-18B3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building as defined major accessory structures are detached, accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The pool at 254.47 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IB establishes a side setback minimum of 20 feet. As proposed, the pool is located eight feet, six inches from the side property line. Therefore, an 11-foot, six-inch side yard setback variance is required. Nine notices were mailed. We received one phone call. And the phone call was received in our office. The person who did not state their name or address was not in favor of the variance.
Was that it?
That's it.
Okay. I'd like to invite the applicant to come forward and state your case. Please give us your name, address. Explain to us the project and what you've done to mitigate the need for a variance.
What I've done to mitigate?
So you're gonna, you filled out a packet. You kind of just give us a summary of what you've done in that packet and what attempts you've made to not need a variance. But first start with your name and address.
My name is Linda Hughes. I reside at 874 Northumberland Drive, Schenectady, New York, 12309.
Okay.
We've lived there just, just a year. Okay? And prior to living here, back when I was married and my kids were young, we had pools, above-ground pools. And my husband handled it, but he never got a permit. I wasn't aware of getting permits. So the thought never crossed my mind. Okay? And I was always the impression that the only thing you needed to get permission for, I didn't know the word permit, was an above, was an in-ground pool because it's a permanent structure as opposed to an above-ground structure. So that was my thinking. Okay? During, I heard that you had to call to get a pool early because of all the backups because of COVID and everything. So I started calling pool places around February. And he said, "We couldn't probably get you one in until the middle of June." So he came to my house and we filled out the paperwork and everything. And he mentioned, "Did you get a, do you have to get a permit?" He says, "I'm from Latham. I'm not assure of the rules of Niskuna." So I said, "No, I didn't know. I needed to get a permit." And he says, "Well, you better, you'll need to look into it." However, I don't need one," this is what he said to me, "I don't need one to install your pool, but you may need one." So at that point, I, I looked up online for permits and stuff like that, and it showed the rules. And I looked and all the things we were doing, as far as I knew, we were following the rules because I didn't know anything about a corner lot, that there was any difference. It never came to my notice that there was anything in there about a corner lot. I thought all the rules are applying to the pool itself and that there was no different rules for different places. I was not aware of it. If I had been aware of it, that my backyard is lucky if it's 10 feet by itself. Now, what you call a 10 feet, I would never even considered getting a pool. Okay, so while I looked this up, I wrote a letter to whatever address was on there asking them for an application for a permit. Well, this was probably around in March. And when I didn't hear anything, I assumed it was COVID. Everything was delayed because everything we tried to do with government agency during that time was delayed. So I didn't think too much of it. I expected it to take longer. So I got a call from the pool guy saying he got one in and he could install it right away. So I had to make a decision whether to install it because if I didn't install this one, I would have to wait a lot longer time. And I'm 72 and I have had diabetes and I've lost 100 pounds in the past couple of years. And I've been advised by my doctor, because I've lost so much weight, to do something to rebuild my muscles because I've had a lot of what they call waist, your deterioration of your muscles because I've lost so much weight. So I thought I really needed a pool this year, and since I'm following all the rules, this was my thinking. There wouldn't be a problem rather than wait till September or something to get a pool installed. So he put it in and I asked him, then he told me I needed an electrician. I did, I thought he did everything. So he says, "No, you need an electrician because it needs ground fault and all that copper wiring and things, so it doesn't, you don't get electrocuted." So then I went on some site that recommended somebody, and so I got an electrician. And he came and installed it, and he must have did a very good job because it cost $3,400, but... So then I got a, a short while after that, I got a notification on my door that I should have filed the permit and I was in violation and to fill out this thing. So that's what happened prior. Then after I realized all this, my daughter, who's co-owner of the house, and her partner who lives with us, we ordered a very beautiful pool. It's, it's brown. It matches the color of the house. We have a tree yard. The fence that surrounds the pool is eight feet high. There's a lot of trees, and these girls installed grasses, these lemon grasses and all these kind of landscaping-type grasses and, and solar lights, and it just looks beautiful. I mean, there's no deteriorating of the neighborhood with my backyard or the pool. I've also hired a true green. I had, what's those things on there? Gutters installed because they never had gutters the whole time and the, the foundation was all cracking, and I had to steel wool that and paint it with cement paint.
So we're just here about the pool?
I know, but I'm trying to show you what kind of people we are. We are people who take care of things and make things look better. And we put a new driveway. So we did all this in hoping that you would see that you don't have any concerns about a deteriorating. I am older, but my daughter will be, is inheriting the house. She's co-owner and her partner lives with us. And they take care of the pool and they do a wonderful job. Actually, Sue has a lot of experience. She grew up with a pool. So that's pretty much it. I filled the application and got in, was denied and applied for a variance. My daughter has a note from one of our neighbors, actually spoke to our neighbors. Nobody has a problem. They can't even see our pool. And they say they enjoy, I have my grandchildren over once in a while. They hear, enjoy hearing the sound of kids. But we have a wonderful relationship with our neighbors and we're very happy to be living where we are. We love Niskuna. We, we have no intention of deteriorating the property or the neighborhood. I think my daughter would like to, that's all I have to say unless you have some questions.
Well, we will have questions, but Linda, should you read the letter into the record or what do you want to do with the letter? Okay. You have to state your name and your address for the, the...
My name is Megan Hughes. I reside at 874 Northumberland Drive, Schenectady, New York, 12309. This is actually from Paul and Christine Santilli at 878 Northumberland Drive, Niskuna, 12309. To Town and Niskuna Zoning Board of Appeals, with this letter, we wish to indicate our support of the appeal of Linda Hughes for a one-time variance and no sections of the zoning ordinance identified in the letter to us dated October 8, 2021. Sincerely, Paul and Christine Santilli.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, Ms. Hughes, can you please come back? Just a few questions for you. I'm Mr. Latif. The question I have for you, in your application, it said something about a previous owner that they had a pool in the same spot?
There's paperwork, there's paperwork that was left of my house from them, and it said they had a previous pool.
Okay, and Laura, this question, do we know if the house had a pool before?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so we don't have, the town don't have a record of it, but, so you were saying in your application, the previous owner before you, that they had a pool?
And they removed it before they put a deck on the back of the house.
Okay, so it used to be where the deck is in the back right now?
I assume so.
It was located in the property.
You'll have to come up to the speaker. Sorry.
On the blueprints, it was, it states it was located on the property behind the house where the pool. Isn't it the exact location? I'm not sure, but it was right, considered in the side yard.
Okay, so they did have a pool there?
In the blueprints, it says they removed the pool, yeah.
Okay, okay. So I got a couple more questions and then I'll turn it to my colleague. So the corner lot, you just mentioned a second ago, you have eight-feet fence. We don't allow eight feet. Maybe it's six?
I didn't say 18.
No, it's six feet. It's six feet.
Oh, it's six feet.
You said eight.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So it's six feet. Is that in the back between your neighbor and yourself, the eight feet?
And there's on the side also between me and the neighbor who wrote the letter.
Okay, so that's the eight feet, and you have the four feet is on one of the streets, right?
Right. Brookshire.
Brookshire. So Brookshire has a four-feet fence, and then what's considered the back of your house, even though you have a lot with two side driving, in the back you have eight feet. What about to the right side?
That's, that's the same eight feet too.
The same?
Yes.
And that's to the back of the house?
Yep.
Okay. And so who lives in that house next to you there?
That's who wrote our letter, Saint, Paul and, Paul and Chris.
Okay. So they live to the side or to the back?
To the side.
To the side. Who lives to the back?
The back is Mike.
Oh, sorry.
And Valerie.
And have you talked to them?
Yes, they actually wrote a letter too that's in the paperwork.
Okay, so we have a letter from them?
Yes.
Not objecting to it? Okay. Tell me a little bit about the pool. I know you just installed it and the pool company, you hired from Latham.
Empire Pools.
Empire Pool, okay.
And it's a steel pool. It's four and a half feet. It's a a brown kind of marbled look on the side, and my house is beige. Our house is beige. And it has, that, it's 18-foot, has a nice liner. That's, but I mean, everything is very coordinated. It's, and the side that has the four-foot fence, that has a lot of big trees against it and raspberry bushes. So it's not like it sticks out in the neighborhood at all.
For the record, I did drive by it this morning and I looked at it. I saw the two big trees on Brookshire. I saw that, I saw the deck, and I didn't go on your property, but I did see it from the road. Just a couple more questions, just for the record, even though I did read some of it in the paper. The drainage, if you have to drain the pool, where is that going to be drained to? Or how does above pool work for drainage?
Well, we actually do the backwash. It's, do you know this, this, actually the front yard that goes along Brookshire?
Yep.
We'll bring the hose out to our property away from anybody else's house or foundations.
So they gave you a hose so you can?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, for now, I am done with my question, Madam Chair.
Mr. Latif, I did just know, I was able to go check our files, and we do have a building permit on file for an above-ground pool in 2000.
Oh, we do.
Yeah, I can show it to you. It was more like an oval rather than a round.
Yeah, if you don't mind, just to take a peek at it.
Yeah, here. So it must have been there for a little while, but then it was gone by the time these guys bought the house.
We just moved in a year ago.
Laura did that. So you had a building permit for that pool. Did?
Yeah, this one had a building permit.
And did it need a variance?
Did, did?
Did it need a variance?
No, it didn't, but can you see my screen?
We did for a second.
Yeah, now we see it.
Yeah, let me, I can zoom in a little bit. So I think the reason it didn't need a variance is because it wasn't round. Can you see it?
Yeah.
It was like an oval, and it was the flat part of the oval.
Gotcha.
Was here. So it must have had enough feet, but there was, it is in a similar location.
Okay, all right.
Another question I have for you, Laura. The applicant stated she sent a letter to the town about a building permit. Is there any record of the letter being received?
I did hear that. I don't know of it off the top of my head. It's possible we missed it, but we try to be really good about responding to people.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, I have a few questions for the applicant. You described that there are fences around the back part of your yard. Are they all your fences? Or are they partially your neighbors?
They're ours, yep.
All of them, including the back and both sides?
Correct, yep.
Wrapping around the front? Okay.
The Santilli's, if you're looking at our house, just the, like a little four-foot part that slants down because it needs four foot on the side, that's theirs. All the eight foot is ours.
Okay, along the back part of the property. Okay. And did you, when you were scouting out where it would be placed in what you consider your backyard, but is the side yard, had you looked at other locations in the back to place it?
Yes.
Can you talk in the microphone, please? You can put it in the middle if you want.
That'd probably work. I think it's screwed in.
Okay.
Yes, the problem with the front yard by the Brookshire is the big trees and there's not much privacy. We have lovely neighborhood and everybody walks around, so it's kind of like it's appropriate place where you can't see it too much. But we did, we did consider other parts, but...
That would have been, it would have been more visible to the neighborhood up there right by the fence too. Whereas now...
So you have to talk into the microphone. I'm sorry. So the reason for the microphone?
There would be a lack of privacy, and another thing is it would have been more visible to people walking up and down Brookshire. Even though there are a lot of bushes there, but they're not, they're, the bushes are like this.
So the reason we keep asking you to speak into the microphone is this is recorded, and then the minutes are done from the recording, and those people who are taking the dictation can't hear what's being said if it's not said into the microphone.
Okay, sorry about that.
And masks don't help.
I know.
They don't. And I just have one more question in terms of the size of the pool and the depth of the yard in the back. You've stated in your application that it's an 18-foot diameter pool, and it is, you're looking for an 11-foot-six side yard setback variance because you don't want to, you didn't want to place it closer to the house. Can you describe why you didn't want it closer to the house?
It's only about 10 feet maybe, and there's an air conditioner. I'm sorry, there's only about 10 feet between the other side and the house, and also there's an air conditioner, whatever that thing is there. And we have a couple of dogs that run, that's the room to run, but mostly because it was, we thought it was pretty close to the house.
So you were, and I don't want to necessarily put words in your mouth, but you were trying to avoid any kind of issues with the pool being close to the house if there was some kind of damage or issue with the pool. Is that correct?
Right.
Thank you.
And it was also, it was the most flat spot for drainage too that they recommended, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I may, I'm, I'm looking at the entirety of the application, but in particular, right now, I'm looking at the diagram with the house and the pool. And I'm just curious, what is the distance between the rear of the house and the closest point of the pool?
Probably at tops 10 feet.
All right, and then the distance between the back of the pool and the property line is, is indicated, about five feet?
Eight, eight points. Is it eight points? Well, see, the confusing part is...
Right, unconfuse me. What's the, excuse me, excuse me. Ready?
I'm sorry.
You can unconfuse me, but just give me a second here. Alls I need to know is I want to hear a number to the best of your ability.
I believe it's 8.6.
Thank you. That's what I needed to know.
Okay.
And trust me, it's to your benefit. Whatever else you're going to say, it's going to help me address my concern.
Okay.
All right. I just want you to know, I took a ride by too, and I didn't go on your property, but I did take a look. And I thank you for your responses to my questions.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Yes, I just, I'd like to be clear because I'm, I did not have the opportunity to drive by, but I am looking at your, your application here. From the photographs you've provided, you can see this from the road, correct?
That's not, you can, but it's not like...
There's big, there's raspberry bushes about the same height as the pool. And if you're walking down the street from an angle, you know, at a certain angle or a certain spot, you can look in, but you, we don't notice a pool.
We took the picture more of an angle to see how, to show how nice it was. We didn't really get the trees. That kind of blocked the view for it.
Okay.
Probably should have done that.
All right, thank you.
Anything else from the board? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on this matter? Okay, thank you. You can have your seat. Is there any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to, to approve this variance. We're looking at 11.6, the approval for the variance. This property is a corner lot, and it does provide a lot of challenges to the applicant, even though they moved in a year ago. And from what I heard from Laura, that back in year 2000, they did have a pool, maybe not the same size, but they did have a pool, and there was no complaint about that pool. So the benefit in here cannot be achieved any other way on this property. And usually when we have a property, a corner lot, it's very difficult for the owner to build anything without causing issues to the neighbor, and we have two letters from the neighbors. Both sides, they were very happy to have, have them keep the pool. The second one is undesirable change in the neighborhood character or nearby. I have to say, I did drive by it. It's very difficult to see the pool. There's a lot of trees in there, and they mentioned a lot of plants. So also there's a six-feet fence between the neighbors. On both sides, there's a four-feet fence on Brookshire, so it's very difficult to see this pool in there, and I don't see any changes in the neighborhood. Whether the request is substantial, this is, we always have the same situation with corner lots coming in front of us. In every case, we do evaluate it a little different. In this situation, the lot, that's the best way that this will fit in there. It is a little substantial, but again, because of the size of the lot, and if it's a corner lot, that's where I justify that it's not substantial. Does it cause any environment effects? We talked about the drainage. It seems like the applicant already have a plan where to drain the pool, and they seem they have their act together on taking care of their property overall. Whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, again, it was self-created by the applicant. The applicant did reach the town, tried to get a permit, and also we found out, like I mentioned before, that they did have a pool on this property. And it looks like to me the applicant have a deck in the back, so it's more convenient to have that pool where the deck is, and also for safety issues, to be able to see it from the windows and so on. So for all these reasons, Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve this variance.
A motion's been made. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I'd like to second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Trymarki?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Dolman?
No, and I'd like to explain my reasons. First off, I'd, I'd also like to say that I'm personally the owner of a corner lot, and so I'm also the husband of a wife that wants a pool. So I, I understand exactly what you're going through. However, I think it's the nature of corner lots that they're not necessarily suitable for pools to be built on according to our zoning laws. So the, I find that the benefit cannot be had by other means, but I do find that this is a substantial variance. I do find that despite the fact that there are, you, because you can see the pool from the street, I do find it to be a negative effect on the character of the neighborhood. I don't find that there's any environmental effects, and this is obviously self-caused. On the balance, I vote no on this motion.
Ms. Pacheco?
I vote yes, and I do want to add that just observing the application materials, the yard area in the back of the house is, is caused, the size of that yard is caused by the placement of the house on this corner lot. And as we have all been discussing, it's limited in area and where you can place the pool. So I vote yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes, I just want to compliment the prior discussion. It looks, look, we have, we have a corner lot, and it, not, that's not particularly unique, but it's unique enough. And the placement of the pool is, you know, there's no other really reasonable place to place the pool, and the distance from the house to the front of the pool and the back of the pool to the fence, the pool's placed in an appropriate spot. and the back of the pool to the fence, the pool's placed in an appropriate spot. I had mentioned in our back and forth that I had visited it. And yes, if you're really looking, you can see the pool. But you really got to stop and look to see the pool. It's, it's kind of, in my humble estimation, nestled away, more so than perhaps other types of applications that we've seen. So for the reasons stated with the additional comment, comments that I've made, I vote yes.
Mr. Hoke?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson McGinnis?
I also vote yes. Your motion carries. Your variance for the pool has been granted. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Can the clerk call the next case, please?
The appeal of Gabrielle Negrini for variance from section 220-16A2C of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 1350 Row Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District to maintain an RV in the front yard of the property from November 1 through March 31. Section 220-16A2C states that the storage of house coaches, campers and trailers, boats or car trailers of any kind is not permitted in the front yard of any residential lot between November 1 and March 31, whether or not on a driveway. The property is a corner lot as defined by section 220-4 and has frontages on Row Road and Wamer Lane. As proposed, the RV will be located in the front yard of Wamer Lane between November 1 and March 31. Therefore, a variance from this section is required. Nine notices were mailed, one letter was received. The letter, "I'm responding to the October 8 letter from the Town Zoning Board of Appeals regarding the petition for zoning variance to maintain an RV in the front yard of the property between November 1 and March 31. I can't attend the 7:00 PM meeting that night. And a writing to set forth my objection, as stated in this letter, I'm not, I'm the homeowner for 1357 Rufner Road, which is right around the corner from the corner lot that wants to have the RV located in the front yard. This would be unsightly and also potentially block visibility. And it's already an area where lots of traffic and poor visibility around the two corner intersections of Rufner and Wamer and Wamer and Row. Please register my objection to this request and confirm receipt, okay, which we, confirm receipt of this correspondence from Jennifer Reagan, 1357 Rufner Road."
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant to come forward. Please state your name, address and set forth your applications, the reason for it, what efforts you've made to mitigate the need for a variance or why it can't be mitigated.
So Maureen, I have reached out to this applicant multiple times actually because there was very little in their application. And she said that she was sick and wouldn't be able to attend, but she would try to do a phone call. So I emailed her tonight as a reminder of the phone number. And then I just tried calling the number that she has on the application, but I'm not able to get ahold of her. But I really have tried.
Thank you. So what do we do in this situation?
So in this situation, you have to evaluate the case based on the application in its face value. And.
Laura, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. Is the camera off for the, the town, the meeting room?
No, Seth made it so that whoever's talking, well, Dean's actually doing it, but whoever's talking, it's on the, it's on the meeting because I'm talking.
Got it.
So I have a concern because the application, as I read it, is not complete. So if we were to vote on this tonight with incomplete information, she would, and it was denied, she would not be able to come back to us. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I explained that to her, I did.
We do have, so we could table it or we could move forward? Okay, thank you.
We can table it.
Yeah, so our option for the board to decide right now is if we are going to act on this or if we are going to table it and request that the applicant submit a complete application. So I'm open to hearing what you'd like to do.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we table this application until the applicant has an opportunity both to correct the deficiencies in the application and to appear before us.
A motion's been made. Is there a second?
I second the motion, Madam Chair.
Before, before we call the roll, there seems to be one more person in the Zoom meeting under the name William Stein. Is it possible that's the applicant?
He is a new, sorry, he's a new alternate to the zoning board.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Is there any, a motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Latif?
I'm going to say yes, but I want to just add to it why I'm saying yes because we have some question for the applicant and we would like, and we heard Laura say that person could be sick or something. So for that reason, yes.
Mr. Trimarki?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Hoke?
Yes.
Chairperson McGinnis?
Yes, for the reasons stated. And I would like to emphasize that I personally would like a completed application in order to be able to completely consider this. The motion's been, has been approved. This case is tabled. Is there any other business to come before the board? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Madam Chairwoman, can I make a motion, or maybe I guess it would be a point of order, that the, that the motion be tabled specifically until our next regularly scheduled meeting? And at that time, we'll be able to reevaluate.
Okay.
Typically, what happens is it goes on to the next meeting and it's the first case that gets called.
Okay, thank you.
Do you think that's an important point to make? Because when there's a case pending before the zoning board, it's not a zoning, it's usually allowed to stay as maintained. And actually, the RV would normally have to be moved by November 1. So in effect, the RV can stay there for another month past when it would be allowed. So I think that it is really important to clarify that it has to be in the next meeting.
Absolutely, I would agree. I would agree. So there was a motion made to.
I don't know, was, I didn't make a motion, just a point of order.
Did anyone want to make a motion to end the meeting? Or shall we spend the evening together?
Well, do we make an amendment to the previous motion or, or, okay.
Accordingly, Madam Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
A motion's been made. Is it sec, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The October meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.